Okay, it's six o'clock. Just doing the work session right now. It doesn't call for it on the agenda, but you could just do a quick roll call. So Kramer. Linda, do you hear?
Linda.
I hear some noise. Anyways, Don, Don, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Aaron?
Yeah.
It's here. Harris is absent. And Linda is attempting to end via remote means.
I am here, yep.
Very good. Be almost said pledge of allegiance. Let's get out of the way. Okay, first item on the work session agenda is the chapter ninety-one, public nuisance ordinance. You recall, we were doing our first reading, I believe, and noticed some things that should probably be changed, so we can go over those now. So does anyone want to begin the discussion? I believe there were some exceptions to the enforcement authority section. And maybe in the notice to abate, notice to abate section on section B. And then probably ninety-one, ten A. Do you recall what they were?
Okay, the handle is just a word.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there was ninety-one, ten was about the about a trustee of the board shall within two days investigate the complaint and make immediate determination of required action and so notify both planes if any owner. So I think part of where this kind of gets convoluted is that we're handling both abatements and complaints in the same ordinance, right? And if it's, I think, I think they need to be compartmentalized, like complaints handwritten by a submitted by citizens and couldn't be handled like the same way as like pumping up handled as far as the abatement. It seems weird to.
So are you saying it should be in its own chapter?
Linda, speak up and courtesy, you know this word of abatement action. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be in its own section, but it definitely needs to be worded so that it's clearly separated, right? Does that make sense to everybody else? Or if something, some citizen comes to something, comes to us with something, I mean, if a citizen reports an abatement issue, then I guess the required action would be to hand it over to the abatement committee. Definitely all has to be in writing moving forward.
And pictures that they have.
But even if it is a complaint from a citizen, it's not, it should never, I don't think there's any situation where one trustee should ever have an lateral decision making as to a required action.
Isn't it the required action? The action that the trustee will take?
Yeah.
So do we need to clear up that ambiguity?
Yeah.
Ninety-one, ten A. Because it shouldn't, it shouldn't be talking about the required action of either the complainant or person being that, I guess, the plaintiff or the defendant, however you want to say it.
Yeah.
Because in order for the complaint to be declared valid, if you go to the section B, it has to go through the board trustees.
Right.
So. Dan, I saw your hand up. Did you have anything?
No, because in that first paragraph, it was talked to by Linda that it was two trustees will investigate to make sure that it is a legitimate complaint, number one, and that it is in my view, number two. And then item B comes into compliance. Once the two trustees have investigated the complaint, it basically starts the whole process off. If you don't have that initiation of that process, you take away from the abatement process in its own all the way through. So that's why A, B, and then C comes with the original signature of all notices, which was changed in the previous board to make sure that verbal wasn't the only thing that was allowed to be in the abatement process. So that way you have a signature tied into it. You had two trustees that went out, investigated and made sure of the photograph, make sure you had a written statement. Then any actions that are going to be needed comes back to the board on item B. And then, and item B is where the board of trustees are getting the majority or a problem of a bigger violation than just weeds, rats. Well, then you might get action on that particular. But without that, you don't have enforcement abilities either to attorney or anything else to do your first stage and where that compliance is going to be on the complaint.
So are you saying ninety-one, ten A should be two trustees on the town board?
Correct. Because all trustees are abatement officers. Whether you have a committee or not, everybody is an abatement officer. And the last three attorneys that had all went through every single bit and said the same thing. So I mean, it's not just one, it's the three that we've had during the last twenty-five years.
Okay, does anyone else have any other commentary sections they'd like to look at or any further commentary on this section?
Yeah.
Give me a second.
I think that kind of points back to like, we're talking about complaints and abatements in the same.
So I think these are complaints just in reference to abatements. There's also a complaint section in ninety point oh nine, which is the animal control section. It's the, this one in ninety-one.
Want me to bring up one of them?
Yeah, and so we'll likely have to, if we're going to adjust complaint language, we'll have to look it down. But on here, it says the ninety-one, ten A at the end. I'm pulling that up. The complaint shall be required before any courtesy notice of abatement action shall be initiated. And then we're proposing and shall remain confidential, but that points to that this complaint section is covering the abatements. So it's found in the abatement section because we're talking about complaints of reference to abatements. It looks like just between animal control public nuisance are the only sections that have complaints in them. So while he's looking at that, does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss on the public nuisance section? So so far, we're looking at going from one trustee to investigate the complaint to two trustees. And then to make the, the immediate determination of the required action. And it seems like we need to add some clarification on what that required action. Maybe the options of what that required action is, or at least point to that that required action is action by the board and not action by either the plaintiff or the owner. Does anyone have any comments on that? Dan?
Hopefully, well, then if you go on to ninety-one oh three, it does tell you what your enforcement authority gets. And as far as the photograph, conduct the enforcement of abatement action, your ordinances with the town, obtaining legal counsel as needed, detailed reports. It goes through your description very clearly what you need to be in place for for your enforcement authority. And then your notice of abatement takes you to your next level and carries you through to your next level, right through on where you need to be on that side of it. This whole ordinance was very detailed out for person, reasons of being able to defend, being defensible. In which we showed that any one property that had to be completely removed, you know, and having a legal action available to enforce that and being defendable. So the stages are this. And not too many of the mirror city of Rapid City, but followed closely what City of Rapid City did for their defenseful side. And then it calmed it down with the board members prior to, so it was more detailed towards a smaller community. We left a lot of language out that they had in, which was even a harsher enforceable situation. The main thing was that anything happens, that it can be collected through taxes on the property that's abated. And that way that the person has the authority to be able to recover the funds as you go through it, so.
So do we want a situation where an individual authorized agent can be the full spectrum from inspection to notification of the violation? Is that, that does look like that's a pathway, enforcing authority to where one person can go from beginning to end without necessarily bringing it before the rest of the board. Pretty much any situation, whether it's emergency, safety, or just general views and grasp, because if they can provide appropriate notifications, then.
Yeah. As far as that authority goes, it always comes back to the town board and finance officer. It is one, of course, who oversees that, and that's why we had that spreadsheet. And nothing was able to go forward without the authority of the board, looking at that spreadsheet and making sure of the violations and violations are enacted. And that's also why with the authority, if you had the trustees that were overseeing it on the abatement committee, also were the ones that brought it back to the board to keep everything transparent all the way through.
Yeah, what he's saying though is that in ninety-one oh three, the authorized agent can perform inspections, provide the notifications of violations, conduct the enforcement and abatement action as may be required to ascertain compliance, so.
And obtain legal counsel. As required, which means they can go to the attorney and that's billable hours without any order.
And legal counsel. Detailed reports. So really, we should probably, so this is ninety-one oh three is really talking about the authorized agent appointed by the board. And so if we just want them basically be the board's eyes and ears to, to find possible abatement issues.
Right.
To bring before the board, then seems like we should strike some of those things. Like you were saying.
Yeah, like we can take out the notifications from that section. And basically everything after the including photographs of conducting enforcement and abation actions is all the way through to legal counsel, because if it's got to come through before the board, then that's up to the board whether or not legal counsel would be needed, not an individual agent. So.
So really, the appropriate notifications should be applying the board.
Right, that's essentially this agent becomes a, yeah, an inspector.
So we need to make that more clear in that, that sentence then, right? So it sounds like that that's the intent that the board had before with what Dan said, is that everything has to go through the board before an action is taken.
Right.
But if we just read ninety-one oh three as it sits, that appointed authorized aging can actually go through the whole process, including obtaining legal counsel. Mark?
This was the one I brought up at last meeting.
Okay.
The contradictions. The only problem is having an authorized agent is probably good if somebody's got a foot tall grass and we got to wait for the board to meet their get together. It seems like somebody should be authorized to do that, maybe somebody in the venue.
Yeah. It's both this, yeah, the way it's written is both very empowering and also very vague. Or it gives a person a lot of vague authority. Now, if it was like restricted to only any emergency situations that they can follow through with the other steps without necessarily coming actually forward, but there's nothing pointing in that direction.
I think that's what ninety-one oh four A is, is referring to. Because if you go down to halfway through it, cut, destroy, remove any weeds, tall grass, noxious matter or nuisance sound growing, lying, located on the property. So that sounds like that it's talking about the immediate public nuisances that need to be addressed. Yeah.
And that's why it says the board of trustees may appoint an authorized agent. Or you may not. You may leave it all under the authority. The thing that we looked at in the positions and some of the occasions that arose was it was more pressure on the board of trustees to be that abatement officer because of the Hatfield McCoy situation, where you didn't want neighbor against neighbor. So what would be a circumstance would be like that presence when we still had Jill here, she would take that authority for the finance officer. So that's why agents of that nature, but they were not allowed to do anything without the rest of the board's seats. They were still under that direction.
Do you think there's a time in which that appointed authority should be able to conduct enforcement and abatement action?
No, doubt about board of trustees.
Right.
Now, in the ordinance, it states that there's more than one occurrence of an abatement on the property that you then, within forty-eight hours, can send a notice out in the ordinance. So you're able to immediately send another notification. So if that individual was sent the notification, did not comply, it was Chuck that had to go out and mow it. And next month, it's the same condition, where you don't have to go through the whole process, you can enact it right away. That gives the finance officer that authority, board of trustees authority, and if you don't want to have an agent, allow that and the trustees keeps it in-house and acts on. But this gave you the ability to enact somebody if you wanted.
Right, but all, all we're saying is that person should essentially be acting as, for lack of a better turn, term, an abatement inspector and not have the authority to take action on their own petition without bringing it to the board.
And I guess that goes to say, cue whether it's tall grass, noxious weeds, you know, with Linda, many occasions when she's reading meters, some of the yards have had a lot of dogmater and stuff in them that were just horrible. We've had occasions that have been really bad. You know, well, you don't have to, then you can send a letter, courtesy note. You're not taking action other than a courtesy note saying, please, will you clean up?
Yeah, and that's covered in ninety-one oh four A.
Correct.
But ninety-one oh three gives that appointed agent a lot of extra authority that they probably don't need to be an inspector for abatements.
If you want an agent. If you don't want an agent, take that photograph off. Take that sentence out, take that requirement out, or as we the board of trustees.
I think we definitely need to have the ability to point, to point an agent if we end up down the path of hiring, contracting out a third party to do it. That's where they would fall under, so.
Then.
You want that option.
Yeah, and if we don't want them to be able to notify, then we need to adjust ninety-one oh four A as well.
Yeah.
Because, or the duly authorized agent is authorized and empowered to notify in writing. And our update is or by documented phone call, the owner of any lot, such and such, such and such, to cut, destroy, or rip up any weeds. But in that case, it's only the notification.
I mean, it wouldn't be that big of a stretch to bulletize enforcement authority. So what we have minus the extra stuff, like to strip it, like item A, strims it down to where they're just an inspector, and then have a line, a section B that dictates those rare emergency situations where that appointment agent can move forward without, or like something that can't wait for a meeting.
What do you mean by move forward? Like more than a notification?
More than just, like, so item A, if we strip that down, or not, sorry, I mean, ninety-one oh three, if we strip it down to where they're just an inspector with the wording that's already there and call that a section A, we could have a section B to where they do have the ability to do the notice themselves in those situations where they can't wait for a board meeting for the entire board to review the notice.
That's in ninety-one oh four A. It authorized and empowered to notify. And we, and if we, we start at conducting and stop at required and line that out, then ninety-one oh three still includes appropriate notifications of violations. And if we don't edit that to be notifications of violations to the board, then that also will apply notifications to the owners about abatement items.
And I really think the way it's written gives you all the ability, gives you the flexibility if you do want an agent, and doesn't take the ability away if you do have an agent. And you still have the requirements where the finance officer is going to do the spreadsheet. I mean, if you overthink it, overwrite it, you take your abilities away from an agent capable to do it. The language is pretty cut and dry, and they, they really are only under weeds and rats, which isn't going to be a situation, and it's going to come back before a board if it's a bad decision. And it's got to be documented, it's got to be photographed. You know, it's, it'd be different if you were in current place down. That's a whole different process, and that goes through the stages of letter one, letter two, letter three, anyway. So you've got another set of rules to follow before anything extreme can happen. So when you're only talking weeds, grass, the majority of stuff, health, safety, welfare. The line. Pretty good.
Yeah, but you yourself said that you don't want that appointed agent to be able to conduct enforcement and abate act, which is listed in ninety-one oh three as one of their abilities.
Sorry. Let's go back to their complaint section for a second. Ninety-one point one C. All notices will carry an original signature by at least one town or board. Is that for the initial pay, you're out of compliance, we need you to do this? That's how I read it. Does that make sense?
Looks like the device all right, the courtesy note, the second notice, the third notice, subsequent violations.
Okay, but you go back to ninety-one oh three in a little bit. Okay, but you go back to ninety one oh three and a little bit, ninety one oh four. It kind of contradicts that just a little bit.
There's there's contradictions all over these ordinances, which is why they were not written very well.
So what's the, what's the specific contradiction you're pointing?
Well, it says that each each notice has to have at least one board member's signature on it. But then in ninety one oh three, a little bit ninety one oh four, it talks about, okay, somebody totally different can notify him or tell him that their weeds need to be cut or yada, yada, yada. You just said we're going to do it, we should make sure it's. Don't think anybody's going to use common sense when reading the ordinance, because that's not the way it's covered, it's got to be black and white.
Yeah.
Or it's just going to cause problems.
We wouldn't be here. If this was perfect, how it is, we wouldn't be here right now.
Yeah, so in that sense, then when it says notify. Like in ninety one four A as an example, that's notify is to provide notice.
Mm hmm.
And that's the contradiction that you're pointing out.
Right, right, and there are small contradictions, most of us can figure it out. But if somebody wanted to be a payment bud. Yeah, they're going to point out these low inconsistencies, it just, you know.
Yeah, and then if you look at ninety one oh four B, it says the notice shall notify the owner. And to cut, destroy, remove, or otherwise remedy. So that it it explains what the notice is there.
Mm hmm. So both ninety one oh three and ninety one oh four both have pathways where. An individual can essentially do the entire bait process, including but not limited to. Enforcement and abatement action, so I mean, does an enforcement and abatement action include hiring a contractor to go bulldoze a trailer, I mean. How is there?
Yeah.
This is all too loose.
Ninety one oh four, it specifically talks about. Cutting, uh, cut, destroy, or remove weeds, tall grass. Not just matter nuisance found growing by located on the property or upon the public way of any same. So, I mean, that's, this being the public nuisance section. It's pointing to those specific nuisances there.
So, but it's always within the authority of the board of trustees, so I think notice to abate really. For the most part is fine if we remove where it says duly or the duly authorized agent from that section, so then ninety one oh three becomes. Board of trustees or an authorized agent, and then ninety one oh four is just the board of trustees. Has the authority listed in ninety one oh four?
I mean, if you want to have, I I see you Dan, if you want to have no notifications without. Or approval. Then. Those things will have to change, but ninety one oh four A is basically the. Clause which says if there's a. Something that needs to be taken care of right away, it can be taken care of right away. So I I think if we, we think about this in the form of questions, what do we want? This, this authorized agent to be able to do. And we approach it from there, then we can figure out how we have to change this to match that expectation.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, and then we go back to complaints, complaints shall be required before, and courtesy notice or abatement action shall be initiated. That's kind of interesting there. Because these are all happening without complaints.
Right.
Yeah, and that's kind of another hangout, because we've ended up in the past and and Dan mentioned that he was right. The Hatfield McCoy situation. We had previous board members made complaints against half the town, we've had other citizens make complaints against half the town over. Retribution, I just. It's unfortunate that it's the situation we're in, but you know, everybody's got to keep their, their law is good, it's just finding a way to do it. That maybe. Yes, the board needs to be involved, but maybe. A little more independent of a process. Would would be beneficial to the town and take some of the pressure off the board, yes, the board can still vote and take care of all that. But maybe having somebody else be the bad guy is the way to do it.
Dan?
No.
Well, like it was brought up, but you think it's a contradiction talking with the authorized agent in the way it is written. Sounds like that's where the biggest hangup is, where everybody is having the authority of an authorized agent instead of the board of trustees. But then you jump back the other way and say, well, an authorized agent would be a good positioning for neutrality is what I said. And it's a situation where. With the reading and the language, the authority of the board of trustees is only giving the authority to an authorized agent. For that in part. And so you're going to basically oversee every bit.
Do you want to do your homework on this and then come back?
Well, I think we need to do some more homework on it and come back. Because we've we've went forty five minutes and we have not just, we have not made a final decision or anything.
Well, A, this is not the place for a final decision.
Well, I realize that.
Excuse me, and B, work session is here where we can voice all these concerns.
We're still voiding the same thing about the same subject, I mean. Everybody's just kind of turning their words a little bit.
There there's some nuance involved, I'll give you that, Tammy?
Can we just get rid of ninety one oh three? We should make it a little bit easier.
Yeah, well, that's. If we ever wanted to do, uh. Make somebody else the bad guy, then we would need that section in there to determine what that person is able to do.
I mean. Also, when we're going to do that, who's going to handle? I think it's board of trustees, please, if you do that. Somebody else wants to. Paying all.
Well, I mean, it it'll have to be a process if we do that, we. Create an item in the budget for it, right? And then dedicate some funds to it for the. Enforcement authority, however you want to name it. You know, so it's it's obviously not something that we'll be able to turn on the diamonds. Maybe even in the next year or so, something like that, but it's definitely something to think about, so. I mean, we're, I know Donna wants to move on, where's everybody else at?
Well, it's just that we keep. Changing the words and we're not getting any places for making the final decision what really needs to be.
Now, that's what, this is why lawyers get paid.
Yeah, well, I I realize where you're coming from too, you know.
And you've paid up, sounds like three different lawyers to deal with these in so long.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you, but, but, um, I was going to ask about ninety one and if, um. We should probably get rid of the within two days, it should say within two business days. So people are not wrong.
Good call there.
Um, all right, so I like the idea that you had, Kel, about just let's put a list together. At the very least of what 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 we want an agent to be able to do if we have one versus what the trustee can do. And at least that way, if we don't really get anything final tonight, then we have that established.
Yeah, exactly the framework, if you can rebuild ninety one oh three.
Yeah, because as far as, once we have that in place, then it's just a matter of people can talk offline until something is readable, that's not that goal.
Yeah, so, Tony, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
All right, pardon.
Considering the time of year that we're coming into, it's not late. It should be fine to take your time to make sure it's written by one donor, actually.
Summer's over, right?
I I don't think we're going to have many twelve inch lawns again this year. It's not a main line.
So, absolutely. There's definitely, yeah, so as far as, let's do, let's do some brainstorming on this agent's authority, so. Yea or nay, provide notifications without board approval? So.
Only in, um, public safety, wellness.
Yeah. And that's kind of like what we said before, wasn't it? Public safety.
Yeah, so, so agent, um, basically ninety one point, point oh four. A.
So they're basically an inspector with emergency corrective action authority.
So there'll be a couple of extra definitions we'll have to add for that. That's another. What's another thing that we want this agent to be able to do?
We definitely want photographing everything, right?
Photographic documentation. Do we want them to be able to obtain legal counsel?
Uh, directly without the word?
Absolutely not.
Let's put a, ask you that one. Okay, brought that one off, we want them to. Conduct enforcement and abatement action, and that's only in extreme circumstances.
Right.
Which is what we just covered.
We want to find that pretty.
Yeah.
Place to be, right? If you can't say that your twelve inch weeds are an emergency that has to be fixed tomorrow. Right, I mean.
Well, the notice is starts the clock on.
Right.
Or when that has to be done, I believe it's seven days, if I'm not mistaken.
First one.
Could be ninety one oh seven eight. Yes, A two, then seven calendar days of the postmark and deliver date of the notice.
Like I feel like somebody has garbage laid all over their garden, it's rotting and it's stinking, and it's like. Starting to. Draw animals that we went along around, that's kind of an emergency, let just go tell them to deal with it, there.
Right, but the idea is, is like we can start that. Clock earlier.
Right.
And then if it doesn't get taken care of after that, then you can keep on to second notice and then. Go through with the whole process. So that's really the. The intent here is just having. An enforcement authority that will start that clock earlier, so. We can get those things taken care of more quickly without having to go through a board meeting first.
Right, right.
So far, we have authority to notify for, we'll call them emergency nuisances, for lack of a better term. And include photographic documentation.
Is it, I think the report at every board meeting, I think, is in there, right?
Yeah, report. At every.
Where that was in ninety one oh four, I think. No.
As ninety one oh three. Each regular meeting. Detailed reports of all action taken.
Yeah.
Then I don't, that.
Which at that point, it's a detailed report of everything identified essentially, right?
Right. So it would be the identifications and also any notices that got sent out under this. Emergency nuisance. Okay. Sure, anything else, anyone can think of, Dan?
And if you do it, the your subsequent violations gives you that authority to have anybody in that funding month, twenty four month period. But, sorry, you cannot down within three days of delivery by every mail. Or by the by marshal.
Right, that's the subsequent violation, so that's the one you were talking about earlier when, um.
Not considered as grass.
Yeah, when it was a repeat offender, let's say. So then that, that gets automatically executed by the town. I guess in this case, that town should be capitalized.
Um, we need to uninvolve the marshal. Hand delivered by marshal to the last one of us. Really. Every, everybody, everybody from the sheriff to the deputies to to Neil. Don't involve your marshal in anything that has anything to do with abatements, because it's not a good idea. So I think we should strike that out, right?
Yeah. So we can do and or hand delivered to the last known address?
Yeah.
You guys, you guys think the marshal should be involved?
For telling somebody their grass is too long, it's going to wear their hat, like.
We've had a certain chances with violent residences, you actually have that, they are baiting officers with a gun before. And pass, and that's why I say I, the language. Can be put in there so you have that built, and just like an authorized authority. But you take it away from that authority. It's just another tool in the box and we don't have to use it.
No, it's an interesting point. Okay, as far as the authorized agent, is there any other ideas for what that? Position should be able to do?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Authorized agent, or ninety one oh three authorized agent, and then later on, they're using the words enforcement authority, they're one in the same, are they not?
Um, so we're kind of, we're kind of separating that agent into being more of an inspector than an enforcer.
Okay, but you've got authorized agent up on the top line, down bottom, you call them enforcement authority.
Which one are you looking at again?
Ninety one oh three. Ninety one oh three.
Yeah. Yeah, I see, yeah, I see what she's saying.
So should that be changed to authorized agent? Then it also kind of.
Or enforcement authority.
Yeah.
Because that's basically, if you did appoint somebody to do that, that's basically what they'd be responsible for doing.
So, it sounds like what you're saying, you either change the top one to enforcement authority, move the bottom one to authorized agent.
Correct.
Yeah. And if we did the second. We took the second action, then we'd have to rename the section to authorized agent as well.
Sounds good.
Those are interesting changes there.
Or enforcement agent, however, however you determine.
Right. But whatever the term is, should be.
Consistent throughout.
Yeah, consistent, right? Good.
Anything else for this agent to do, inspector with emergency, photographic documentation, part of that meeting, it's basically. Basically it.
I think so, does anyone have any other suggestions for the so-called authorized agent? We're trying to kind of limit them to basically being an inspector. For the board, an emergency notifier. And also to provide detailed reports to the board at meetings. Seems like a pretty, pretty good. Hope you guys think of anything else, please email me or Aaron or maybe Donna too. And whether, if there's anything else you'd like to see on that list, or if there's any other changes you'd like to see in this one, but. Uh, so, I'm okay with moving on to everyone else. Very good, so let's move on to item one B, new contract for.
Um.
So Donna's gonna speak on behalf of Chuck and Ferguson Construction, and so I asked her to. Speak at the podium to clearly delineate speaking from that position rather than the.
I'm not speaking from being on the board, but we have, we have looked over the new contracts. And it seems like the new contract has added. Uh, more and more things on that, that uh, Ferguson Construction is responsible to do. But also there is, has not been a raise for Ferguson Construction for two years, and so. Uh, we're, we would like to put a hold on this yet, so we can further go into it, maybe another thirty days to make this decision, because. Uh, it is just more and more. Uh, things to be done under his title, and I guess we need to find out what actually. Decision John has as far as inspections and stuff, if it's going to be chart first, or how that's going to be handled. So we, we want to go through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Doc. Since you're speaking for, for it's in construction, my question, reason why I was here is uh, the water line, what, what's going on?
Yes, they, they have to be flushed, they're manually, it'll be.
Been three weeks, I always been there this weekend.
Yeah, well, it's been down to, you know, so. Uh, he, our son took off and from water, he had it as far as he is.
Yeah.
And Anthony has to come down to it, plus. And that's all.
I can learn to handle if you needed to get the whole code faster. Can you help?
No, basically, we're half that, if installation is done, I've had a little, long getting inspection, uh. One of the major things that, that John is, probably got to work. Probably end up with, because the inspector lives out of town and you don't know what bit of. It's that, it's that point, it just uh, it's a. Pressurized and flushed, and it, it will be in service. Unfortunately, there's been some. Hell on both myself and Chuck, so consequently, and rural water has been here, but it all was. And also, so that's basically, you know, the whole of it. And then I'm getting. Pressure check down, isn't a big deal, except that. That we don't get that.
Yeah, um. So you, I mean, we're kind of straying off of this, but, so you have contacted John to come do the inspection and he's just not able to do it right now?
Well, that's not a fair statement, however, it's not been what I call admitting, you know, immediately. He doesn't live here, so consequently, he comes down from time to time, babysitting the treatment plan, and that kind of stuff, coordination is. Has been hard to get together, so he, I guess that's a real long this year. Get their thing, so it's just a matter of pressurizing, dechlorinating, putting it on service.
Okay, um.
And that, that's before. That connection is made that he's referring to.
Okay, have you, what?
I'm guessing, uh. Lost another week because I didn't. Everything. Coming together.
Another week. I didn't hear.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing, I've been trying to get at it for the last three, four days, and that isn't happening.
So um, I can talk to Anthony and see if, if.
He was gonna be on hand to help too, I didn't have neither.
I mean, sounds to me like we just need to have the business for the building inspector scheduled to come down, and then uh.
Correct, you know. These regulations can be done by an apparatus that um, can, rural water has indicated that. You know, that would be, that unit would be available. Um, but on a very limited basis, apparently if this is demand, however, there's roughly five hundred gallons in that. And stretch of lines.
Right.
That water can be transported, it's just, it's hot, that's the problem, if it's too much for a, for just. Yeah, land apply, I said they will kill that.
Yeah, so um, I mean, right now, Benish is in, responsible for all that stuff, right? So, and you're saying, it sounds like you're saying that you contacted Anthony, you contacted John. And you have not gotten a satisfactory response?
Well, I think the coordination is part of the problem, as you know, they're, they're both very busy little guys. So, but, and we take very long to rep, buy the whole thing, I mean. Half a day would get it done, you have pressure check for minimum two hours, and uh. There is a state, and Rapid City Code, you know, what pressures have to be for how long, it's, it's in the book.
Okay, is there anything that you need me to do to help push that along, or you just?
Not really.
Or the homeowner to call them too, and.
You asshole for news.
Yeah, I don't know.
You give me a number, I'll call tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean. So we're kind of straying again off of this contract thing, does anybody have any comment on the contract? Uh, Trina?
Um, I'd request, because it's confusing, there's three different places where it says we'll pay this much for this and this much for that. I would request that the rewriting of the contract just include a summary. Um. So the one spot says that we pay like two, three hundred dollars for one thing, and then another location, it says fifteen hundred, and another location, it says.
Well, but the wealth comes out of different pockets from the finance.
Well, that's fine, I mean, we can go list them separately, but if we could just have it, and the reason I ask too, is because. Our finance payroll and contractors, that is way higher than it was a year ago. Are we paying all the time, are we, that's a different subject payroll, I know Chuck's not on payroll. But I was just reviewing all these numbers from last August to this August, and I thought. It's out of balance, the payroll is out of balance, the contract, I mean, last August, we paid Chuck seventeen hundred dollars and something. And this August, we paid him three thousand something, and I'm sure it's all valid, but as somebody who's just trying to see how things. How the money's being spent, it's confusing to see such a huge increase in contract uh, bills. We just, we don't have the information, have citizens, we don't have the information of why that's gone up, and so. I'm looking for a way that will show us more clearly. So that's why I'm asking, maybe on the contract, if we had just a summary before the signatures that said. Those three line items plus whatever hourly, it was just all right there, I think that would help. Um.
Well, if you look at, um, for instance, on the first page, one, two, three, four, fourth paragraph down, where it lists a monthly amount. If you look at the, the underlying heading for that paragraph, that's.
Yeah.
The indicator of what that amount is for.
Yeah.
The, the general summary of that section, and then it goes into more detail up until it goes to the next section.
Yeah, which is two pages later, the thirteen thirty nine come on.
Yes ma'am, and then that one just, yeah, so that one has just a compensation station for contractor, that one should probably have a uh. More of a summary like the first one.
Yeah, and then the next page is all underlined, streetlights are, is individual. And then manpower rates, forty two bucks a month. And then the next page, there's something for, oh, that's for concrete, so it, it was, it's just hard to read, that's all, I'm confused. I'm just trying to think how we could make the numbers more transparent for everybody.
It's gonna be different, because it does different jobs every month.
Yeah.
So billing is gonna be totally different, and last year, the old company was pretty, was doing a lot of inspections.
Yeah.
Eric?
Yeah, I think, I think it is very important to note that these, these rates for the compensation for contractor, for all duties set forth below, regardless of the frequency of said duties. And you can look through lists under the two sections, I mean, turn water off and on is directed by the town engineer. Or, uh, so it doesn't matter whether it's one or thirty, there's no change in pay, there's a lot, this is a very much. This covers a lot of territory, a lot of territory, and if we grow a lot more of this, we'll need to be done a lot more often. So this is, there's, there's no simple.
Right.
Simple thing here.
And, and uh, we'll get to Dan and Trina in a second, but I will point out that this contract is. Very close to the one that he has now.
Yeah.
Um, it, it just. Uh, adds the, the town engineers, basically his liaison to the town to, to help do the reporting and stuff of. The duties that were performed, and then also to help um, kind of. Get to navigate the different things that need to be done, so that's kind of the, or kind of, that is the intent here, but this is. This, this is very similar, there are, I think, uh, I don't recall if. Like. Grass cutting and weed eating at the lagoons, is that anyone on this one, Chuck?
It is, we've picked up a lot of actually, buddy, your, your, my labor, whatever you wanna call it, I mean, the expansion of the lagoon, they've doubled. Uh, what the mowing process, what people. And it's, it's pretty difficult terrain, I mean, it's not, it's not quick thing here with it. Zero return rate down, you know.
Right.
Uh, there is some areas there that. Kind of a gray area between where the ripper stops and where the gravel on top of the road is. Um, they exceeded some of that, but this year is a very, very. Uh, good year for growing, and uh. I'm guilty of standing here as far as, I have to be on property, and uh. You know, we're dealing with some other plants right now, because most everything has gone to seed, so even though you destroyed a plant that is there now. Spring is the whole random deal, that, that spring started out very difficult, because of wind and rain and whatever there was happening. Some of the. Maybe it's a needed need. I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to go over everything. At least another time, some of these places we mowed five times.
Yeah, so um, I know we have more things to mow out there, but uh, I don't recall if mowing things that we're doing, that, that was part of the old one too, though, right? If this was.
Well, this smaller area. Well, you know, a huge amount of work, well, property could be mowed, you know, I mean, it's.
But that's always been part of the purpose, that's why I'm saying, just going into the goods.
It didn't specify, you know, amount of acreage or anything.
Right, yeah.
That's kind of probably an oversight of him getting the contract, the general public could not have it too.
Okay, um, Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I guess I'm really, uh, when you redo this, why do you have a contract? Evan is going to do the engineer now, the engineer is doing the water testing, the engineer is doing the sewer testing. The engineer is doing all the work, and everybody's been bringing up about uh, saving money as far as where we're at with. Attending with all the other circumstances, and the engineer basically, as you read through this contract, he can't do anything, unless the engineer. Directs him to be able to do anything about it. And with all the services that are listed in here for streetlights, mowing, snowmower. And pay him for services rendered instead of having a contract, and then also, there's the ability to bid it out. There are other contractors that were bidding, mowing, did the snowmower. Uh, where you do services as rendered and pay for services as rendered. To me, we are paying Anthony and Benish a large amount of money now to oversee everything on the treatment plant. As well as the water, as well as the sewer, as well as the wells, and the new towers coming. So it's gonna be where Mr. Ferguson's under Benish's direction, then the town should be paying this money to Benish. And then Benish billing the town for these services, and then there should be an hourly contract on the circumstances. And I know for Steve's defense too, it's in his contract right now, that a licensed water sewer contract. That can, can inspect these water lines instead of them being open for three, four weeks like this, and waiting for that circumstance, it's always been that way. But to me, I, I fully feel on the contract that it should not be a contract, that should be all through Benish. And the town's resources and money should be applied in that circumstance. His wages, wages and rates are all affordable, so let's pay as rendered, why contract anything, I have that responsibility. That should be all Benish, and I thought if that's the direction of the, was all Benish, and Benish was taking over. And I thought it passed the direction of me that said it was all Benish and Benish was taking over our infrastructure as well as everything going on and cream of plant dollars, water.
Yeah, Benish is taking over operations, but they're not doing groundskeeping or stone removal or any of the things that Chuck has historically done. Doctor, put your hand up.
Part of the situation, it's not too hard to assume the contract is almost exactly the way it was before, only it's with Benish, not the town. Town is not renewing the contract. Benish is renewing and the town is physically looking at what it says. Burn rates, fire rates, whatever else. It isn't changing far any. I mean, there are some things that you have to go to the town with the hourly rates and that kind of stuff, but we're not re-investing, we have, it's almost identical to what it was, only it's listing Benish as. They're they're not taking the town posts and stuff. I mean, as of this month, that maybe John is in there as a backup because we do not have anybody on board. They're running my turkeys the other way for somebody to physically take over the position. So in the event that I'm not capable of doing those types of things, then there is a backup. And that's what John is, hopefully he was here introduced to the board, you know, he is running the treatment plant. Just the maintenance and stuff around, outkeeping and that stuff.
Somebody knows you did it.
She is really not that hard to decide either to or not.
I mean, they're, I mean, Benish is taking over operations or water sewer, so like the testing and stuff should be.
They have, at this point, I mean, there will be certain things that happen. Like soil removal and that stuff, but they're not physically going to get involved in. So it's, it could probably be a little clearer than I do. The contract with the town is not expired until it's considered a as a matter of fact, I have gone through in March and April with the contract. So that's kind of why they're trying to get ahead of the game here and get ten, eighteen, the times it goes through, extra just out, you know, the it just keeps increasing the duties every year. And you know, now, now if I end up, if there's going to be jetting and over cleaning and things like that, I believe about really complex. Probably be built out of what the hours to Benish. Spring is kind of the time to do, I think, to have some mechanical issues with the jetter that we're ironing out right now.
Hey, Trina?
It is that hard to decipher. It really is. Could say the average citizen doesn't have a clue is a little bit offensive. But the reason we don't have a clue is because everything that's said is twisted back the other way again. Or it's not that hard to decipher, but nobody has a clue. We need, that's what we're asking for. We're we're asking for a a detailed report, a deep detail that we can understand. My concern is that I thought that Benish was taking over. Now, how much are they taking over and how much are we paying them versus you for what things it seems like if we're going to have a contract with Ferguson, because I don't know, I don't know. Company names even call Chuck Ferguson. That's great because we we appreciate everything that's being done. But it would be nice to have, like you have it outright here, a lot of different activities. But then what are we going to pay Benish for? What exactly are they doing? We, it should go hand in hand with your contract. They're similar services. So why don't we have them together in the packet? And and I thought they were taking over water testing. And so they'll be down here already on a regular basis.
Yeah, it's under their contract, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it's, this stuff is not easy to read right off the cuff, but there, you know. I do proposals for a living. That stuff wasn't easy to read. I had to be in it for a long time before I started to get it. And these are no different, so I mean, we his contracts in the packet, we had other packets with Benish's contract in there. So, I mean, if if you want to have a meeting where we go over them and stuff like that, I think that might be a good option where we could kind of have a group discussion on what's in the various contracts and how does this fit together? And then if there's any questions that come out of that, we can address them to the necessary parties, so. All right, Mark.
You benefit taking over, but I'm not sure everybody understands, nobody in Benish is ever going to touch a shovel or a backhoe or do anything.
Or weed blacker, a lawnmower.
Yeah, so there's always going to have to be a contractor hired to take care of all this stuff and yeah. I don't know, look, looking at rates, the charge charging, if they go for another company, it's going to be twice as much for sure.
Actually, kind of wanted to.
I I wager even when it comes down to water testing, Benish is going to call Chuck and ask Chuck to go do it. That's just my feeling from I get from Benish.
There isn't really that much testing. There's a back tea that's done once a month. And certainly times there a battery of tests that are going through the lab or this last time we didn't, it just kept going and going. I couldn't get and that's how things get confused because I like to pick them the first week of summer. Then you know it's down and then if it gets off for any reason whatsoever, then they run into a situation where one time in forty years, it didn't get taken on time. So it was just a little bit of a shot as well.
Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just poking around in the math here. And it's like, even if we were to interpret those those two rates at, say, I don't know, twenty bucks an hour. We're getting like five hours a day and it's a two man team doing some of the stuff on here. I mean, you're going to call out somebody out to turn off water, turn on water. Yeah, I think it'd be pretty silly to 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 say that that this is a bad deal for the town.
Well, you're not going to get any cheaper.
No.
I mean, so, I mean, I've heard from you know, Ferguson's side that that we need to increase rates. Do you guys have any ideas what those should be or the percentage increase?
I would think a percentage or something would be last time, you know, negotiations are kind of an open open area there for increase. You know, I think it actually stated that there would be percentage of increase to a year up to a certain time. The Spanish thing kind of come into play in the middle of things, you know. And I was real skeptical of it at the first time because now you're dealing with two people.
The general fund.
Benish is pretty much all the jobs on what is just to be done. I don't know if he's done this with other towns or not, but it's something new for us after forty years.
Okay, is that the end of your comments, Chuck?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Deb then Mark. Depends on what what you're talking about. I mean, they form a lot of functions and we have on-call budgets for dif- you know, different functions. So I guess general engineering, town planner, that type of stuff. So do we have that? That figure for the like the trying to think of the best way to say it. Basically, oh, well, it's 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 what's going to be our solid amount that we pay Benish every month? It's not tied to all the projects and everything that we're doing now because that kind of, you know. I'm not going to say it clouds it, but it doesn't illuminate what our monthly output's going to be to them. So do we have that number? Do you know what that is?
The operations contract that we approved was eighty thousand.
Right.
We haven't paid that yet. Right now, we're just paying on their agreements. We have different agreements that are the wastewater treatment plant, the North Water Tower, I mean, you know, all these different, we have a whole stack of agreements that we have and they just fill as they work on each project. And that's what we're paying them right now. I mean, I just did some invoices today and I think I had sixteen thousand dollars to go to Benish this month.
That covers projects and everything. So if we go to eighty thousand of the operations contract and we divide that by twelve, then that'll give us our our monthly amount.
Yeah.
So it's about sixty-seven hundred a month for them to do the wastewater and water operations. And when it's more than that too, it's the building inspection and and other things that are listed in their contract. Mark?
We just going to get, because I just happened to notice their their new fees get, well, they're getting that from the town. Plus us as builders have to pay. Are we paying Benish or are we paying the town? Because I see there's sixty-nine cents a square foot for building inspections. Is that for the town or for Benish?
Oh, the town will collect it and then we'll pay Benish for the inspections, yeah.
Is that on top? So does that equal out what the previous cost was? I I mean, or I don't know if I'm explaining this right. So the town used to get six, I think it was sixty cents. I don't remember. Sixty cents a square foot. So are we going to pay the town sixty cents a square foot? Cost another sixty nine cents a square?
The new right overrules the over.
Okay, so, but that's going to go to Benish then for inspections that, are they going to do them or are they going to have somebody else?
Well, they're going to oversee them, yeah. So they'll have John do it or I think they'll have Chuck do some of them.
And John's the one that put the building up out there?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Easy, easy.
It's not done yet, but I know what you're saying.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, doesn't that consider a conflict of interest if you're inspecting your own building?
Well, I don't think he is inspecting his own building. It's not, it's not done yet, so we're not going to have in final. Sorry, we're not going to have final inspections on that until it is finished. Uh, Dan?
So we've been, I know for the last six months, I've been going through like a spreadsheet of what Benish is actually getting paid for and what services he's doing versus what we're going to pay Ferguson above and beyond for services. And, you know, with this, you're saying this is going to vanish. But it says it's done for most of.
That that's going to Ferguson. That's not going to Benish.
This is between town. This is between Chuck and the town.
Yeah.
And there's plenty that Benish is not going to have any change in at all in this contract. Well, I'm noticing one thing is that we've got groundskeeping seems to be under the same category that I believe is covering coming out of the water fund or one of the other funds, because that's why they're broken down the way they are, because they're coming out of water sewer streets. And groundskeeping is currently looks like it's under the water one. I don't know if that's really where we want that going or if we want groundskeeping at a general, as a general fund.
Some groundskeeping, but then others like at the lagoon, looks like it's going to that sewer.
Just curious.
Yeah, so that's something like.
There are certain amounts. It doesn't have to be put out to be explained very clearly. So consequently, and what happened in the past while like if they split the water and sewer contracts out, because added together, they exceeded the minimum amount that could be paid without going off the bids. Consequently, with with them swift, those numbers reflect a few different duties. But I think you could probably make it a little more clear with him also for soldiers and everything.
All the contracts are in the package, so.
Can't can't get much more transparent, really.
I want to say again, Benish isn't here. Emergencies, anything like that, water main breaks. It makes sense to have someone get in trouble under contract and be called.
Right.
To take care of it. Benish isn't going to drive out here at night at two thirty.
And being on contract means available. It means there's basic, there's basically a retainer in its own right. Yeah, like if something explodes, Chuck's there, where if it was just paying by the jobs. As far as he's concerned, he can move everything.
Yeah, I mean, I I know we're straying off into Benish land and I don't think that it's a it's not warranted in this case, but we don't have the Benish contract as part of us to look at. And so maybe it would be a good idea to have a meeting where we go. We have both contracts in front of us. We can look and see where do the, where are there any blurry lines? If there are, where are they at? We can see if Anthony has some time to come down and and go over with us and we can all kind of learn more about.
I think that Anthony needs to explain everything in detail. I mean, he is the one that's furnishing the contract to the town and to me and, you know, I think there's been a little too much taken for granted that everybody understands and they don't. I understand why they don't. So it probably would be who can come in and explain everything in detail. I don't know, in writing, so it was it's confusing for me, so I can only imagine what it's like through and out.
But it's part, Mike goes, we don't have any changes that we're looking to make, right? This is just we've pretty much said that this needs to be dug out, dug into more before we.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we work for any planning itself.
Yeah, I mean, and that was the idea is that we have a public forum to talk about it or talk about it and to bring forward their concerns and for anybody present to talk about it, also to get the contract out into the public sphere via the packet. Oh, I mean.
Well, it is probably funny, yeah, well, I mean.
So like the fees, the those other three fees that have broken out, they can be referenced as like, they can be split off into the exhibit eight and then reference. Then they would be in a list, because that's one question that people have, like there's this list. They're all over the place, different numbers. Maybe all the dollar signs should be in the exhibit and then referenced by the other areas of the contract. But then again, I'm in ordinance smokes.
Okay. Dan, do you have a quick comment? And then I think we're ready to move on.
And like I said, there is nothing wrong with the schedule or the fees or the charges, what it's asking. It's the separation of Benish and this. And we need a spreadsheet to show us that eighty grand and take out of his, what Benish is going to be the authority of and to fully remove it from this and put it all into Benish. So that way it is clear exactly what is being done by Ferguson Construction versus Benish. And then if Benish doesn't hold their feet to the fire to be responsible for them needs, then that's where we need to address it, just like this four-week old water line. That shouldn't have slipped through the cracks. And if they're going to be responsible for inspections, whether Mark builds a place or you build a place or anybody else builds a place, they're not going to wait four weeks to be able to do an inspection on a water line, sewer line or a building isn't. to be able to do an inspection on a water line, sewer line, or a building isn't standard? And do we need to have our building inspector have clarifications of licensing? As what they do in city about the city to be a building inspector and qualifications for that with the paper that says, yes, I can do this. You know, that's gonna be the circumstances. We need to have that clear separation. Yes, the fees are in here. It says water, sewer, what we are employing, everything else. That's a no-brainer. But what Benish goes and not, and we've asked for that spreadsheet forever, as well as projects. What's the water knowledge process? What's the water line connection? What's everything on the other end of it? I mean, we, it'd be awesome to see all of that since the concerned citizens are asking about what fees and schedules and amounts of money has been spent of election there with you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, let's move on to item C, town purchase brackets for Christmas decorations and search of decorations. Linda, are you still there?
Should we take a quick recess? Anybody mind a recess?
Yeah, we could. I mean, you guys wanna take like a eight-minute break or something?
Yeah, we can save this discussion because we don't want the town to do it. We're gonna use the brackets made out.
Well, let's take a quick recess and we can come back to this item after then. So let's reconvene at, uh, let's just call it seven forty.
All right.
I don't know. She says that'll be continuous. So call if we need anything.
This was her. All of a sudden I noticed she was pretty quiet.
Yeah.
And there may be, well, there's probably gonna be some things that he does.
Yeah.
But, you know. But this contract here is just between the town is construction. So we're gonna know what are the things that basically he's just sort of done outside of the water. So yeah, I mean, if we need to do another, uh, this.
Well. January twenty-four along that. It's hard, hard to find.
Yeah.
It's been just a year and a half. That, that's when he got the raise. January twenty-four. Of last year.
So it's been over a year.
Been over a year.
Yeah, a year and a half. So, but yeah, I mean, if you guys have, would you like to see on there? Just let us know. You can put it on there. See what people are with it. And, uh, I mean, it's all a public process. Yeah. If you guys have a, have something that you'd like to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This will be thinking twice. And, uh, so that's, you know, to that, and then now we're going with all the branches. I always see you during my lives. No, I don't know badly. That makes me feel old.
Yeah.
But to an artist not for this, like, oh my gosh, my grandkids are coming over this weekend. That's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, it was great. Uh-oh, they're trying to shut it. That's all because of granddaddy. Uh, that's, that's pretty cool that. Nothing that's for it, but definitely. Well, uh, I hear you. Just kinda vice to not. So I listen to the you know, you know. All so well. You're not my dad.
For the foods, I think I'm gonna take off there. I got a little water I gotta go tuck in. So.
Okay.
I kinda, that was kinda my question. I was gonna wait. I didn't, you know, guys have been around this long. So.
Yeah. Okay.
I was just wondering when the hole was gonna get, you know, I've been trying to get my trailer out so I can go unload the storage that I'm still paying rent on.
Okay. So let me, uh, yeah, talk to Anthony about that. See what he does.
I got a couple of, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I got a couple of contacts. I've done a lot of work in the country itself and do that. I might have made a couple of phone calls and say, ask why they're stringing them along here. So. Thank you for listening.
Yeah. No, thanks for coming.
Let me know if I need to call someone and be able for you.
No, I don't think that's necessary. I'm perfect, perfectly capable of doing that myself. All right. Thank you though.
Christmas decorations. Should we sing a Christmas song to kick it off?
Yeah, right. Here comes Santa Claus. Here comes Santa Claus. Hopefully the one guy that came to listen today, we were talking about. Mother, she used to sing to us. Yeah. Danny boy, Danny boy.
Oh, and I'm going to not involve myself in this discussion again, the liquor license rate.
The, the discussion.
Um, oh, I just asked Terry to put it on the agenda because we, we changed the ordinance that never updated these.
Filthy.
So we need, you need to do that technically. Eric, be for three fifteen a month maximum.
So you're gonna bring, what do you have to say about the attorney?
Oh, I got a slideshow. It's beautiful.
It better be.
It is.
After you, after all this buildup?
Well, the last, uh, so when I did the streets, when I was running GPC four, now I'm running G five. So the IQ on this slideshow is twice what it is.
There better not be any, uh, type of swelling thing, huh?
No, it's not. I caught all the hallucinations too, cause yeah. No, it'll be fun.
There's also the.
I can't see the weird request. But I'm not picking up.
The offset. Really? It's only ever, is that annual fee like a application fee or anything?
No. Like I said, the only one we have is part of pantry. Time starts.
Well, we got one minute, Donna. Sorry.
I cannot get to filling flies.
Anywho, anyhow.
There we go. All right. Forty. Let's recommence. Let's recommence this meeting and move on to item one C. Uh, purchase, town purchase brackets for Christmas decorations slash storage of decorations. And, uh, I believe you guys had Dan and or Deb had a, uh, comment to kick it off or?
Yeah, we have these brackets last year with the names of page, all the brackets to go around the pipe.
You guys, we're starting to be awkward. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you. So sorry about that.
We don't need.
No P brackets?
And I would like to, uh, comment on the storage of the decorations, uh, talking some of the, to some of the citizens and the board members. Uh, I, we believe that the storage of the decorations should be on town property with an inventory that we have not received yet. So we would like to have the decorations moved to town property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, the lower store is the wellhouse that shed down there. There's nothing in there. Right. Things like this, like an intermittent use item. Yeah, that's a better place to store. Like this building, I think is kind of slowly turning into a more immediate use type of building, you know, like Benish is using it to bring things in and out where we feel they're floating there.
You talking about the?
This, the blue shop here. Yeah. Cause I know that now that needs to be at, Benish wants that accessible for storage. Where the one down there is.
Yeah.
Kind of a headache to get through. So probably a better place to store things that we're not gonna need on a regular basis.
Good. All righty. So, um, I know you guys, you mentioned that you picked up the decorations from Rapid City. You guys have been storing them in your warehouse or?
In Rapid. Yeah.
Been storing them in Rapid and you presumably are just waiting for somebody from the town to come get them or?
Didn't know what you guys wanted.
And then they can check them out. Okay. Cause we were gonna do that too, but.
Okay.
So I think that's fine. We have no problem.
Right. So.
It was secured. Thank goodness. You, the other nonprofit, otherwise we'd have never gone and followed through, which is awesome. So.
Which nonprofit was that? Do you know?
Whatever.
Freeze uses.
Yep.
She's come on a bit to be quiet over a year ago. It wasn't for her, the town would have been getting. But that's okay.
Okay. Well, thank you to her.
Yep.
So.
Whenever you wanna come in and, you know.
Right.
Then just make arrangements with us and we'll.
How physically, how big is the, the load? Let's say.
They were on a pallet. I suppose they were five or six foot tall.
Okay.
One pallet?
So it's like a four by four pallet then? Something like that?
Yeah, and then they opened the pallet a couple of years.
So presumably a single long bed pickup, drug, full size would fit in there?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, is there a, I get, I mean, I got a, I got a truck I can use for that. So can I just get with you guys and then we pick them up and then I guess Aaron, Aaron can come along if he wants and we can go unload them at the lower wellhouse or whatever.
Yeah. And Terry, you have that inventory?
Never gotten inventory. When I asked about it, he just said, Dan, the guys that pick them up.
I didn't think you have to worry about keeping anything.
No, I'm just, um, Scott Anderson had just told me that he would give me an inventory of what they surplus to us. So we would know. And I didn't, I never received that. When I asked about it, he just said, well, Dan's guys already came and got. I presumed they would have and in, cause they had to surplus them up in inventory. So they have to have a list somewhere. Cause the town of, I mean, the city of Rapid had to surplus them. So it had to go, it had to go through the boards. So it's just, so that we know for, cause we're supposed to have an inventory of all our stuff.
Yeah. Every, every time on that.
We don't.
We're not stealing.
And I know, and I'm not, not insinuating that at all. It's just, we need, cause it comes up every year with the audit that we're supposed to have an inventory of everything that the town has, like from our debt and it's never been done. So, and then it's one of the things I'd like to get done. Cause we used to do that at county and so.
Lawnmower, water pump.
We don't have a lot of equipment, but.
Yeah.
Right. So it sounds like what we need to do is, is pick them up, inventory them and put them in storage for the town. And then we can give that.
But I would think that, I would think the city of Rapid has an inventory because it had to go through their surplus procedure. And they would have had to say, we're taking these off of our inventory.
Yeah, they should.
So I'll check with Scott again and see if he can give me an actual list of, well, surplus.
But we'll have to do one for our own edification and then we can at least begin the inventory process on the town side by at least having this inventory, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Part of us are, yeah, I'm just thinking about it because we are, we're, the government put all sorts of over aggression, like showing our, our asset about capital value, like we own things.
I mean, part of it comes through the insurance. Like if you have equipment, you have insurance.
I don't know. Are we gonna ensure our?
No, no. Off of the corner too.
Right. So I'll contact, uh, you Dan and we'll get a time. And again, thanks for picking those up for the town. Thanks for storing them for the town and being patient with us. So, uh, I think we're okay on that one. Uh, Mark?
It's really big. It sounds like they were good enough to get brackets made. Maybe the town should find out.
You're gonna buy them at breakfast, kind of.
How much?
They're expensive.
They, they owe. For the brackets, you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Are the brackets included? Uh, are they available for the town's purchase? Okay. All right. Well, so we'll at least have to look at doing those at some point too. So. All righty. Very good. So, um, item D, fee schedule for the liquor license. So this was the companion to our ordinance update of the the alcohol section in the ordinance where we are removed the all the pricing from the ordinance and are putting it into a fee schedule. That'll be, uh, reviewed and or updated annually, uh, when we do all of our fee re- reviews. So, um, this one here, this three fif- so if you recall, the idea behind this is so for pops, uh, since they have an off-sale license now, but their operating hours are not as long as other establishments that have a, a twenty-four hour operating window, even though they can't legally sell liquor in that twenty-four hours, they can, they can maximize their ability to sell alcohol during the state permissible hours. So the idea here is to convert this three, this straight three fifty a month uh, operating fee for the off-sale liquor to a dollar per operating hour cost. So that we can accommodate smaller retailers that um, don't have those long hours by which they can. Yeah, sell liquor. That's, so part of pulling that out is to make that change. Terry, did you want to comment on this two hundred and fifty dollar annual fee as well?
Well, and so the only, prior to pop, the only off sale dealer we had was Corner Pantry up there. And I didn't find anywhere where we had charged them an annual fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. They paid the three hundred and fifty per month plus five percent of their alcohol purchases, but. Like, so I'm not sure what that was intended for.
Okay. Yeah, so. Guess we'll have to maybe uh, keep looking for it or, I don't know if there's somebody else that. Might know. I mean. Well, we could do it again and see if it illuminates that one in particular. So is there any comments on this from anybody here? Dan?
So that means then uh, the Corner Pantry wants to cut their hours again and go to the same basis then.
Yeah.
And take the income away from town.
They need to also be taking the income away from themselves too.
Correct, but if they're not having much activity after eleven o'clock at night and they want to lessen their timeframe and. They also, will they be allowed known that this is occurring then?
Well, um. Current, it, when they renew their operating agreement, their operating agreement still has the old numbers on there.
But you're not going to send them this D schedule.
Well, we'll be, we'll be renewing the licenses here shortly. Because they're only good till the end of the year, so October, I think we should get the. The renewed date and then well, at that time we do a new operating agreement, so I think we'll have to notify them that that has changed.
But I think they should be made aware of that this has changed before their licensing, so if they want to redo anything, they have that ability prior to.
And I can certainly tell them, because I, I, I correspond with them every month, so. I can. Let me decide what it is, yep.
Yeah, all right, thank you for that. Okay, is there any other comments or questions on this? So that, this one will be on a future agenda for adoption, so. I'll have to answer the question of the two hundred and fifty dollar annual fee. And then um. Get that calculation for dollar operating cost and then also notify Corner Pantry this change, so they can. Uh, get what to expect and then if they do want to. Again, modify their hours then. They can, so. Okay, um, so it doesn't look like we have any other comments on that one, so. Item B is the town attorney nomination and appointment procedure and I believe Aaron has a. Presentation.
Yeah. He's trying to streamline the whole process. There we go. Yeah, so there's been a lot of talk about attorneys and how there's a lot of confusion of how uh, city attorneys are hired, are nominated, are appointed, so. I uh, did the research, looked at the statutes and everything and kind of then actively looked around at other towns and their ordinances and how they handle, kind of. Kind of put together a more structured way of setting up the office of the city attorney, so. Kind of how things have been, you know, like the appointments, the, the um, directions, it's all been. Not very structured, um. Like hiring an attorney on a motion or dismissing attorneys on motions, that's one thing, but um, paying, paying. An attorney without ordinances or. Uh, resolutions to support it is actually not permitted, so um. That's kind of the current problem, so one thing about this is, I don't, I don't think this is something that's, that's been talked about much in here. But it's actually a pretty, pretty critical thing that we should keep in mind beyond just this, but pretty much every aspect of everything we do is Dylan's rule. And so this is a rule that applies to municipalities, which basically means that. If there isn't something either in law, statute or ordinance, a specifically granting a power, then you're not allowed to exercise it. So you have to essentially give permission. For everything that needs to be done and where this becomes a problem is right now, there's, there's no ordinances governing. How we pay our attorney, what powers they have, what authorities they have, what they can do with and without board directions. Uh, so then when you get into the statutes, I think this is where sometimes maybe it gets a little bit confusing. Um, but for starters, so as far as appointments, as long as there's a support for an officer appointment in ordinances. You can appoint an, uh, an officer to that position. Interestingly enough, there's nothing in our ordinances that references the fact that we have an city attorney, other than the fact, other than the statement of who the city attorney is basically on the first page. So we don't even have anything in our ordinances giving us permission to hire a city attorney and uh. So that's interesting, there's, there's the. Class one and class two municipalities have the city attorney position incorporated into them, but as far as class three goes, there's nothing. Um, so we can appoint as needed officers. Um, but um, such officers, yeah, shall be appointed annually and then the governing body of any municipal corporation may contract for legal services or employ an attorney. Under such terms and conditions as they deem proper, but any contract for legal services within an attorney shall be made by ordinance or resolution. Such contracts shall set forth the compensation to be paid and the specific services to be rendered, so this is the, this is the, the statute that kind of. Calls out that things need to be done a little more streamlined, we don't actually have the authority to set up a contract with an attorney unless there's an ordinance or a. Resolution governing it and what most municipalities I've looked at do is they'll have an ordinance that says. Uh, legal counsel compensation shall be established and reviewed annually through resolution, that's typically all the ones I've seen that I've looked at, that's how they do it. So we can't just pass a contract on a motion when it comes to an attorney, we actually have to have it. In the resolution or ordinance, uh, but.
Can you go back to that a little bit?
Uh huh, somehow.
Oh, sorry.
There, it's not bad.
So the contract shall be made by ordinance or resolution.
Right.
So the, if you have an ordinance outlining compensation, does that count as a contract?
Right, essentially, yeah. That, that can, so that's what a, a lot of, a lot of the municipalities do is they just have, so they'll have a, an ordinance that says. Um, con, uh, attorney services will be passed by resolution and reviewed annually and then every year they'll do a resolution, kind of like how we do with the board of trustees compensation. They'll review it every year and at that point they'll determine what they're going to compensate and it's kind of interesting is. The municipalities, they don't say, oh, here's what you're charged, the municipality says, here's what we're willing to pay.
Right, and so um. This is a resolution that, that is basically the annual review of a set contract. Not only does it, I guess it could do whatever we wanted it to do, so it's not just compensation, but also to cover duties and things like that.
It can, yeah, so as far as doing that in a resolution, that's, the resolutions are more just for the compensation and then as far as duties, authorities and so on, all spelled out with ordinances.
Okay, so the, the ordinances are not just compensation, but also the.
The duties and, right, because as it stands without, so essentially without any ordinances at all. Governing what an attorney can or cannot do, they can't do anything without a motion. Directing them to do that specific task.
And you're, you're making this um, contention based on Dylan's rule?
Largely on Dylan's rule, yeah. Yeah, and that applies to municipality specifically. And spoke the, I added on there, both the Supreme Court and the South Dakota Legislative Re- Research Council, they both really put Dylan's rule to be. Abided by, um, but pretty much what I've seen and what I've gathered through statute, so nonamy is identified and nominated obviously by board members. Present qualifications, now appointment may be made by an emotion, but does not imply an agreement to compensation, so that separates the actual appointment of a city attorney. Does not tie directly into what the city attorney is being compensated, so you can have one attorney, you can have three attorneys, you can have no attorney. Whether you appoint them is one thing, whether or not, how they're being compensated is a separate matter. Um, yeah, and the one thing is that because it does have to be any agreements for compensation, do have to be ordinance or resolution, that's a matter of. The public, so that has any, any negotiations or discussions about how to set up. Attorney compensation, they have to be as public as any other ordinance or resolution. Um. Yeah, and here's kind of the breakdown, just the reference, um, now we go to the scope, so when required by the governing body or any of, of the first and second class, the city attorney shall furnish an opinion upon any matters. And see, that's kind of the problem, is it doesn't identify third class, so it doesn't inherently give, looking back to Dylan's rule, it doesn't inherently give any authority at all to an attorney. In a third class, only to a first and second. And then basically you skip down here, perform such other professional services incidents to his office that may be required by ordinance or directed by the governing body. So really, they don't have the authority to do anything at all unless there's a specific board action telling them to do that thing or an ordinance. That directs them or authorizes them to do it. And that's, that's where we come into a problem where we don't have any city attorney ordinances right now. So there's no scope, there's no, this is what we expect. Um, third class not obligated to appoint a city or uh, attorney, ordinance identifies city attorney as a position, but does not require one or limit the number of the same. But with conditions, with consideration for Dylan's rule. No action may be taken by the cer, city attorney unless explicitly authorized or directed to do so by a formal board action, that's kind of where we're at right now. Because we can't have legal action being done our, our behalf unless we can tie it to a specific board action. So oversight accountable to us, all billing must be itemized, that's another thing is they do, which we have had itemized bills as far, I understand. As far back as we know, um, but no payment man may evade without board action, which is the claims, but no, no build work can even be considered. Legitimate unless there's a board act in tight foot, because the attorney doesn't have the authority to take action without a direction from the board. So unless they get a direction to do something, they can't really bill us for that thing. We have to make the motion giving them, for basically anything. Unless we have, and that's, that's part of it, if we write ordinances, then the ordinances could be like, all right, these are the things they can do. Without necessarily getting a motion from the board directing them to do that, then it's covered. But right now we have no, no coverage. Um, it sounded, yeah, just about like the, the accountability, um, board oversight, insurance compliance. Um, dismissal, no special statutes on anything on dismissals, just uh, same as appointment, so if it's a motion to this, uh, motion to appoint, then the reverse is a motion to. Dismiss, if you pass a resolution to a point, that's a resolution, and so on. Um, that would also apply if we were to. Find ourselves in a situation where the attorney was in elected position, then they would also need a recall vote, just like trustee does, which could be problematic. That ended up as a leading situation. Yeah, so we have no ordinance covering the scope or compensation, that is exposing us to financial and legal risks. All matters, all attorney matters, any action taken by attorney do need to root back to a board action directing that, that. Action to be taken, um, we need to draft ordinances to cover the scope and authority of the city attorney. And we really cannot consider any further legal relationship to be contractual unless supported by a resolution or ordinance. So I think that's where it comes into where we need to direct attorney to do something, it has to be pay as you go essentially, until we get an ordinance or resolution in place supporting it. So we can't do like a retainer or anything right now, until we have ordinances or. Resolutions supporting it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the retainer was the result of a formal board action. As well as the non-payment of it at the last meeting claims.
Right, but the, it was, it was, it was like considered a contract, even though it wasn't passed by a resolution ordinance?
I suppose, but I mean, for this, it's not really a contract, but it still was a formal board action.
Right.
To, to. To begin the relationship, let's say.
Right, right.
With, with said attorney, so. I mean, we're not completely outside of this, but we don't have anything governing the attorney outside of that.
Right, right. Um, yeah, and like other officers, um, there's very, very, very little. Uh, in statute governing the city attorney, where the finance officer, there are mountains of statutes, I refer to what this finance officer can do and what responses are. There's mountains for the marshal, there's mountains for the other officers, but when it comes to a third class municipality. We have to basically build it ourselves through the ordinance.
Interesting. Uh, Trina?
I'd like that PowerPoint to be added to the agendas of our, um, properly documented on the website.
Yeah, yep.
Um. A retainer is for uh, potentially for lower cost, right? But um, you know, it's fine if we want to pay him his full value. Um, after the fact, instead of having a retainer, a retainer is different than a contract. Any uh, references to him being an employee or on board or any sort of officer is. Irrelevant because he is none of those things, so there was a lot of language in there. I, I'll review that a little bit more and I see where it's coming from. It's a fine line. And um, that's fine if we want to make it like that, but I just wanted to bring up all of those.
Yeah, city attorney is an officer of the municipality, once they take their oath of office, they, just like we actually have Anthony as an officer, he's our engineer. There's, there's offices, what, and so the city attorney is considered an officer of the municipality.
What I'm reading is that, I'm not finding that, but I'll continue this research.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions on the Aaron's um, presentation or the topic of the town attorney nomination and appointment procedure? I thought that was, was interesting, uh, is that, I wonder if there's a way that we can. Have like a third party legal, paralegal or something like that, review that. We uh. Obviously have to have a formal board action to do that, but. To have like a, a third party verification of, of this information as far as it pertains to us.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of uh. You know, I guess, take a, take a harder look at it too, once that occurs, we is, I do appreciate everything that you've done there, but I know. Just for my own, I guess, curiosity, but also I think the board should do, do, do diligence as well, just to. Make sure that, that we do have the correct uh, understanding of all this situation and then we can proceed, you know, like as, as well as.
Yeah, yeah, most of, most of the best information I got was finding other, other third class municipalities and looking through their ordinances and seeing how they're handling it. That really helped their.
Okay. Very good. Okay, uh, any other questions, comments, concerns on this topic?
Please come on and say thank you for bringing your attention, that's obviously a lot of work. And we.
Good job.
Yeah, thanks again for some more volunteer work. Okay, all right, well, I guess that brings us to items from constituents. So um, y'all understand how that goes and.
Y'all.
That's right, so do, are there any, uh, anything, anybody you'd like to bring to the board's attention? Donnie?
It was a really good meeting, I was done the news conference.
Yeah.
Right, come on.
Well.
You better let that suck.
Yes, ma'am, all right, thank you. Any, anything else from any other constituents? Dan?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the research, you know, I know in the past with the attorney, it's got a new motion. The only thing that depends on resolution, which motion is a resolution, so when we bring them together, it's in the same circumstance. You know, when you change positions of professionals, as long as it's not personal and it's totally more of the citizen's side of it, it's a whole different aspect, so. So I really hope that it keeps put on it and all positions are gathered in a good position that way.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Uh, is there any other items from constituents? Uh, yes, sir.
So I was reading the agenda late and that's why I showed up late. So I was reading the agenda late, and that's why I showed up late. Um, I see on there it says storage of the Christmas decorations.
Yes, sir.
These are the ones that are, were donated from Rapid City, correct?
Yes, sir.
So those have not been awarded to anybody besides my wife and kids.
Okay.
So there is no, there shouldn't be any discussion on what the storage is, because she's the one that has control of it.
Okay, I see, uh. I mean, uh, do you, do you have like the paperwork from Rapid City showing that or anything like that, or?
She does.
Okay. Can, can she email that to me or? And Terry?
Yeah.
Because I wrote a letter to Pat Anton at the city of Rapid requesting the surplus, and he. Wrote an email back to me saying they were. Approved to be given to the town, so.
They're, they're approved to give to the Christmas celebration of the town.
That's what he told me.
Alright, well, um, it sounds like we have some things to clear up on that, so if you can uh submit the paperwork that you have. And then we'll get the email from Terry, and I'll, I'll just call down there and see what, what their intent was, and we can clear that out, is that okay?
That's fine.
Alrighty. Awesome, well, um, so other than that, is there any other items from constituents? Okay, uh, moving on to trustee input, Donna, did you have anything?
No, I think it was, it was a good meeting, um. The ordinance, the nuisance ordinance says.
The nuisance.
Is it? It's a nuisance, so we have to get it. Well, other than that, I think.
Okay, great, Karen?
Um, yeah, thanks for, thanks for coming, the input, especially on the. Nuisance ordinances, because it affects you, it affects citizens very disproportionately to have properties, so it's good to have the input and uh. Yeah. Um. Good meeting, I think.
Yep, I'll just, my only comment is on the nuisance ordinances, I actually. Liked the discussion and the, the length of it didn't bother me, because I have kind of an analytical mind, so I, I enjoyed that exercise, but. I apologize to others if it was a little bit too long. No, no, no foul line, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, with that, let's go ahead and. Um. Adjourn this session and at, uh, what is it, eight thirteen, eight twelve, alright, very good, thank you.